Mike.
Dr. Monica Becker. Emily.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Good morning, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you so very much and welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. We're going to start this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silent prayer. Now, if you'll all please rise and join us in the sang of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the 46 states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome everybody. Please feel free to come in, find a seat. Well, if you guys want, we're -- this is great to see a full house and I think we'll get to that here in just a minute. And do want to let those of you here in the audience know and those of you watching at home that we have received word. Dr. Becker's running a few minutes later, had a family thing to take care of, but she is on her way, so we'll have everybody here today. The first thing before the council tonight under consent agenda is the minutes of the January 20th, 2015 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. O'Donnell.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. We have a first and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, next, moving right along, is appropriations ordinance 15-03 in the amount of $309,402.22. Would point out that, you know, almost 30,000 of that is the cost issuance of, for some of our bonds and then quite a bit of it is appropriations for the CCUA and some of our sewer debt and water debt for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 15-03.
Second.
Second. We have first and second. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Lee.
I just had one quick question for Mr. Lasher. I didn't catch this when I looked through it earlier, but under land expense detail, there's a $60 fee for a stormwater permit for CP1. I'm assuming that's Central Park?
Yes.
And I was kind of curious as, since everything's established out there as far as there's no open active digging for the most part other than homes, is that a permit that we should do a notice of termination on? And you might want to talk to Garrett and see if it's appropriate to close that out.
Yeah, okay.
It may not be, but because you're still building houses potentially, but.
Yeah, okay, we'll check on that. Appreciate it. Are there any other questions or comments before we call for the vote?
I just am excited to see the break room.
Yeah, yeah, glad for our public works employees, yes.
Right, that will happen, yeah.
Get rid of the old rickety card table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next is city requested appearance and I think Brian Hayes is a popular guy, our director of recreation and runs the rec center, so I want to welcome Brian and he's going to present the 2014 Distinguished New Professional Award.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, governing body and city manager for inviting Drew and I here today. We had a conference last week in Topeka. It's an annual conference that we go to every year for our professional association and for the first time ever, one of our staff people got recognized in front of our colleagues and our people that we work with. Drew Conwell was named the 2015, actually, Ty, I was wrong on that. Distinguished New Professional of the Kansas Park and Recreation Association. This award goes to a KRPA member who has rendered outstanding service to any phase of the recreation and park profession on a local, state, or national level. This award shall be limited to those persons that have served at least one year, but not more than five years as a full-time employee. Drew, in his short time as recreation supervisor, has restored passion and commitment to our programs. Programs were becoming stagnant and were declining in participation. Drew's personal passion and commitment to the community in its short time has restored some of what has been missing. Several new programs have been offered as well as dusting off some old ones. Drew makes it a point to know every participant and family by name and has become so visible in the community. Drew has become proficient in every aspect of our organization from facility maintenance to clerical duties while upholding the quality of programming. Bel Air Rec has always held volunteers and spectators to a higher standard of behavior, but Drew's efforts have taken this to the next level. Bel Air Rec can honestly say that we are known in the area to provide quality programs with a high level of sportsmanship among its participants, volunteers, and spectators, which we have lots of those here tonight.
Yes.
Although relatively new to the profession, Drew made it a point the past three years to get involved outside of Bel Air Rec. At a KRPA conference, he attended a session on the Hershey's Track and Field Games. Being a former track star himself, he wanted to get involved. He joined the state committee and has assisted with nearby local and state meets and in 2013 was invited to help chaperone the Kansas delegation to the national meet in Hershey, Pennsylvania. All of this was done during baseball, which you guys know is our busiest time of the year and, you know, I kind of, not there at baseball games at night anymore and I thought I was going to have to work for about a week. Well, I didn't have to, so Drew had it all covered and I was able to get out of there. So, I know that this trip was a lifetime experience for him for listening to the stories after he got home. He also shared those experiences with the community through the local media and has given several presentations to groups and service clubs in the area. As I stated earlier, Drew's passion for what he does is exemplary and something that I haven't seen very often in my 26 years of the profession. Drew's ability to connect with the participants, volunteers, and families makes the Bel Air Recreation Community proud that he's part of us. Drew.
This is a little easier than addressing 400 people at the state conference, but it means a lot to me. This is as much about the city of Bel Air, the community of Bel Air, the rec center, and everything that we have tried to accomplish together. First and foremost, I want to thank the governing body, the city hall, city manager, and then obviously city hall staff for everything you guys have done for us at the rec center. I know we call you a lot and we really appreciate all your support of our department, so thank you very much for everything you've done for us, all right? Secondly, BH, the boss. I started here in May of 2008. Al, the very first thing I did was officiate machine pitch baseball. I was terrified. The other thing I was responsible for was cleaning toilets and stuff like that. So, basically, I started here without purpose, without a cause, and this city has given me purpose and a cause. And as I look around the room tonight, there are so many people here that mean so much to me, right here, professionally, personally. You guys have been there every step of the way and I really, really appreciate it. You guys mean everything to me. You've opened up your families, your homes. I've been allowed to be a part of that for six years now and that is something that I'll never forget and there is no, nothing that could ever compete with that or replace that. So, thank you to everybody that's here tonight, all right? My rec center staff, Thomas, Vic, Michelle, Carol, you guys, you're my light at the, in the tunnel sometimes when the tunnel doesn't appear to be lit. You're my shoulder to cry on sometimes. You help me vent. It's very frustrating at times doing my job, but you guys have been there every step of the way and it means everything to me. Michelle and Carol, you guys helped train me, so to go from where I was to where I am now, that speaks a lot about you guys and the staff that we have at the Bel Air Rec Center. Vic, I get to talk Seinfeld with you, so does it get any better than that than talking Seinfeld every morning, all right? And then, obviously, I just want to say one more time, the volunteers that are here tonight, you guys just mean everything to me. Everything over the years, the hundreds of volunteers that we have. In 2013, we had 303 baseball participants. We had 87 coaches. That's almost a one to three, coach to player ratio. That's incredible, incredible. It's almost unheard of, so thank you very much for everything that you guys have done for me tonight. I look forward very much to game days, to the first night of practice, to the coaches meetings, everything that it involves, so I just want to say thank you very much for your support of the rec center and this community in general, all right? Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Drew, I just want to say, I remember, oh, what was it, Brian? A couple of years ago, I came out there, actually because I was going to buy a snow cone from the Lions Club, I won't lie to you, and I think it was Guy and Jack who were working and Brian saw me and came racing across in his car and said, "You gotta see all this stuff we're doing." And Drew, come here, show him. This is David. So, spent the last, the next hour and just, Drew, listening, I still remember vividly that, you know, like I said, it was two years ago, the way you were able to go to each field and describe the game and tell me players' names and teams' names and even some stories and the passion you went through and when you talked about the stuff that you were hoping to do and, of course, you always gave great credit to Brian and we're very lucky to have you and all of our rec staff. As I go around as mayor and I talk about some of the great things about Bel Air, even when I meet people who don't live in Bel Air, they hear about the Bel Air Rec Center. They know their kids are involved in it or they have their friends who are in it. And it's because of a lot of the people here in this room right now, the volunteers and the staff, and so I just want to say again, thank you so much, not only to Drew and Brian, but to all of you volunteers who make our rec center, I think, one of the best ones, certainly in this region, so thank you again, everybody.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yeah, go right ahead.
I'd just like to throw in that my kids have been in the Bel Air Rec program for 10 straight years and I remember when Drew was some skinny little kid and didn't know anything.
He's still a skinny little kid.
True. It's all relative, but it's been impressive watching him mature and grow up and we're lucky to have him. I know that he's had plenty of opportunity and he wants to be here and we appreciate him being here and I've been being involved for 10 years. You can see when there's people who know how to interact with kids and coaches and such, I know how to handle difficult situations and Drew does a tremendous job and we're lucky to have him.
Thank you again. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. Certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but. It's exciting, I'll tell you.
There's exciting things.
Yes. We're selling land.
Now you see why it's dangerous to mess at the rec center.
Yeah.
I wouldn't dare.
Yeah. That's the kind of support the rec center gets all the time.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I sure remember when they're talking, they lied down. All righty. Well, we'll go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, and final actions, because the city council does have a full agenda here today, but.
Do we need to report first, Mayor?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Lee, this is why you're council president. That's a good point. We need reports. I got caught up in the excitement. Thank you.
No problem.
My report is nothing too formal. I was excited earlier this week to meet with Chief Atterberry and see the new car and all the modern stuff that we have, that they have for our. Can we have someone pull that door shut? Yeah, if you could, thank you, sorry. But just to see the new car and how, and I think we were the first police department in the state of Kansas to get the car, to get a car from the Chrysler plant, the Dodge plant, so that's exciting and I know they're very happy, especially everything we've done up here for council for them and, like I said, was able to meet with the police department earlier this week. And, of course, I'm super excited about the entry monument that's coming in that we've all talked about so much for the next two years. For those of you who've driven by, in front of Chisholm Trail State Bank, you can see a piece of sheeting, like a plywood, little board hanging up.
It's gone. The wind blew it down.
Did it? Okay, well, before the wind came through today, it was there, thank you, Betty. So, but that's my report. Let's start down here with Dr. Becker.
I really don't have anything to report because we kind of had a little time off here, which was really nice, and I'd just like to say, since I think the deadline's already closed for people to file for office, because I wouldn't want to discourage anybody for money for office, but it really is a commitment to be here and to serve on the council and it does take time and so when we have a week without any meetings, it's like we've been on vacation. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Lee.
Well, I did want to mention that I'm not going to be able to attend the SCAC meeting on the 14th. I am going to be otherwise occupied, so I hope that somebody from our council will be able to attend.
And when is that again?
February 14th.
February 14th.
It's at Cowtown.
It's at Cowtown now.
They moved it to Cowtown from City Arts.
Yeah, so I won't be able to attend that, so hopefully we can have somebody attend that. I will say that, on the thought of the people signing up, it's exciting to see that we have a lot of people inspired to sign up to be on city council and that there is enthusiasm to be involved. I might be a little disappointed, too, that I have that much competition, but, you know, it's good to see that there's lots of folks signed up and that there's enthusiasm in the community to help Bel Air grow and be better, so that's exciting to see.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
And I do plan on going to the SCAC meeting. I have my assistant going, so I'll be there on the 14th. And then, I also wanted to just go ahead and thank Mr. Lasher. Next Tuesday, my government class will be coming over for our annual city hall mock council. I'm excited about that. It'll be very different because we've moved it to just a senior class, so I only will have 17. Yes, I only have 17 instead of 60, so that'll be different, but thank you, Mr. Lasher. He put together an agenda and we'll be showing that a little bit on the TV, so I just appreciate you doing that, Ty. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I have two items to report on. The first is, I am pleased and proud that the mayor and I are members of the Bel Air Lions Club. And the reason I say that is, the city now has under construction a pavilion at the recreation center. And Lion President Gary O'Neill last year said, "You know, we're selling these snow cones, maybe we could make a little shelter here or something." I figured something maybe 10 feet wide and nine feet tall and a little piece of wood in front and that's it. Mr. Mayor, we have a $25,000 to $30,000 structure being, and it costs the city nothing whatsoever. And so, I'm proud to be a member of this club and in addition to that, Mr. Mayor, this structure, the roof was put on this morning and it's going to get electricity and it will get water and we'll have some benches and things like that, so it's not completely finished, but the outside structure is. There are two businesses in the city of Bel Air that donated their time and their labor, donated everything, and they constructed that thing. The Lions are basically not contractors or anything, so I want to give a thanks to Rates Contracting, who was a business here in the city, and Seamless Pros. These two gentlemen did the whole thing, basically. We helped, we handed them items, handed them a hammer. That's what we did, really. So, they are, the Lions Club is remarkable and I'd like to thank all the members for what they have done. In addition to that, the tree board is shy of a couple of members and I have a member, a prospective member. Her name is Hildy Yopp and I'd like to recommend that the mayor appoint her to the tree board. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that.
Well, my report, most everybody said everything again.
We'll start with you next time.
That's okay. I do plan to attend the SCAC meeting unless it's bad weather, because I'm not going to drive a clerk out town to go for that, but that's what would be cool. That's all I have.
Thank you so much and just to piggyback before we turn it over to city attorney with what council member McDonald said, yeah, this pavilion and I've, being a Lion, I've seen the pictures come through, it, again, guys, and the volunteers, I can't say enough how blessed we are as a city because of the volunteers, not just in the Lions Club, but at the rec center. I mean, this is, we've got a great community, so I want to thank the Lions Club.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one thing. I said nine feet by, you know, 11 feet or something. This is 34 feet long and 20 feet wide and more than 11 feet.
You can park a car in there, yeah. Two or three, okay, thank you.
When I go up there on Thursday for cards and games, I always see them out there working.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, well, go down now to city attorney.
No report this evening.
Mr. Lasher.
Just a couple items. Just a reminder that the home show starts Thursday and I know, I think, all the council and we've got other volunteers that are working the booth and Rick has sent out some information about your times and location of the booth and things like that, so we, you know, would invite the public to stop by if they're down there and see our booth. We're pretty proud of it. Again, speaking of donations, the, Bob Cook donated the wood and stuff. It's quite a, quite a booth that we have there with all the wood pillars and stuff and he donated that to us last year, so we actually got to use it last year and we'll use it again this year. And then, just to follow up a little bit on the elections, there are two people running for mayor, there are two positions open for council, and there are six people that are running, but that does not require a primary, so you have to have seven or more for a primary, so, and I checked and the school doesn't require a primary either, so in Bel Air, we'll just have the general election on April and it'll be open, the advance voting starts here April 2nd at noon and it closes April 4th at 4:00 PM, so they can come to city hall and advance vote. And then, of course, the general election will be April 7th and that will be here from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Wonderful, thank you. No reports from committees. I would just like to say, Mr. McDonald, the person who recommended for the tree board, make sure I get her name and number before we're done today.
I will give it to you.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. First thing before council is consideration. This is an ordinance approving special use on, basically, the Catholic Care Center. They, too, are putting up a monument, you see part of that and just, basically, we have to go through all the regs and everything, so this is us approving special use, so, and it's legal and all that good stuff.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve an ordinance approving spatial use on certain properties owned R6 located within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas.
Second.
We have a first and second. This meeting ordinance has a roll call vote. Dr. Becker.
Aye.
Ken Lee.
Aye.
Guy McDonald.
Aye.
Betty Martin.
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Aye.
Passes five to nothing. Okay. Next, we have two items, B and C, talking about sanitary sewer, sewer line along a tributary seven. I'm going to invite Garrett, if you could talk a little bit to us about items B and C on the agenda, which, you know, the first one with the manholes and everything, the bids we got were quite a bit higher than the engineer's estimate and then I think you had some stuff we're going to bring it back down. So, if you could talk a little bit to us about the first item.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, just a reminder of what the project is. It has three parts. First one is 1,400 feet of sewer line replacement. It's 12-inch sewer at the moment, which is at its capacity. It needs to be upsized to 15-inch. The second is 12 manhole rehabilitation. The third is wet well improvements due to hydrogen sulfide gas eroding away the concrete and that sort of stuff. We got three bids, Noawak, Wildcat, and Donlinger, all of which came in over the engineer's estimate. The estimate was 361,000 and the low bid by Noawak was 509,524. There's a couple of factors that come into play. One is KDHE just updated their Davis Bacon wages, which, due to the funding source that this is, we have to abide by certain wage requirements for this. Well, these went up substantially, so it has about a $15,000 to $20,000 impact on the project. The other side of it is the unknown liability that goes along with it. This is happening, the majority of it, within a tributary and then the rest of it is in a wet well, which is extremely deep, so to estimate approximately what it's going to be is pretty tough. This one just got missed badly. So, that's the part one. Part two of this is, we got with Noawak to see if we can make this project actually happen. Noawak was low on groups A, B, and C, so it didn't make sense to talk to any other contractor. And what we could do, we could realign a little bit of the line, we could take out some of the wet well improvements and it subtracts roughly $69,000 from the contract, taking us down to $440,000. Now, when we originally got the KDHE SRF funding, we have $536,000 earmarked towards sewer. Well, that includes all of this work plus all the SCADA work and the design work for this plan. Well, the SCADA plus the design work comes in around 120,000, so that leaves us about $415,000, so that was our benchmark. Well, to make this work, like I said, we got this down to $440,000. We can pull group B out, per se, and pay for it out of our existing sewer fund, just through the sewer improvements line that's within that fund, so that puts us right down to that $415,000. We don't have to go back to KDHE and ask for more funding. I don't have to ask you guys for more funding. It just makes it work.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If we pull that out of our sewer fund, how is that going to impact some of the projects that CCUA is asking us to fund? How low is that going to take us? Because we have a couple things that they're asking for some money this year for CCUA, so how is that going to impact that?
Well, this hits the sewer improvements and so that would just be our own infrastructure improvement line.
Okay, nothing set aside for CCUA, okay.
Right, and in that, we have $30,000.
Okay.
So, this takes roughly $23,000 out of it. My intent was to do manhole rehabilitation work anyway.
Right.
This keeps it going.
Okay. Okay.
So, you're saying the total is 440,316?
Yes.
That's if we approve item C.
By taking.
Exactly.
Out of the sewer.
Right. It takes out of the sewer and it subtracts out a few of the lines that were originally bid in the project.
Right.
So, what's before, it's not as people accept the bid from Noawak and then immediately, I mean, the council chooses, the next would be to then do the addendum to bring it down?
You got it.
To come up with the 440,000.
B and C go together.
Yes.
You have to do them both.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to stop.
No.
No.
You need to do them both.
Well, you still have to do them separate.
Right, I meant.
Right, 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 right.
Mr. Mayor, I did call and talk to Mr. Glazer yesterday and Ty about this, because, you know, whenever you see something get blown by 140,000, you want to make sure that, you know, you've looked at all the angles and all that and the one thing that's tempting to do is say, "Well, let's just rebid it," but the problem with that is, is contractors typically, once they make a bid, they hold the bid, they're not going to change it, so this price, we're not going to get a better deal for this in the near future, just based on our conversation and I kind of, my experience, I'd agree with that, so it's, I'm not wild about it, but we do have the funding for it, so.
It sounded like this is kind of a timing thing, too, with the KDHE, new regs coming out, which is why it was higher.
And it needs done.
Exactly.
We've got to get those bigger pipes.
Yes, we do. Yeah, for what CCUA needs as well. Wonderful. Any other questions? Thank you so much for explaining that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lee.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Noawak Construction Company at a cost not to exceed 509,524, subject to change order number one of the sanitary sewer rehab project being executed by Noawak and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
And first and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item for council, of course, is. Next item for council, of course, is the change order that has been discussed.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lee?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order with Noawak Construction Company for a reduction of 69,208 dollars and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next. D and E, I know we're talking snow tonight and tomorrow, but it's, we need to be prepared for lawn mowing, and weed pulling and all that. The first is a proposal from Countryside Lawn and Tree to mow Bel Air Park, Brookhouse Park, and Denise Park, as well as lawn treatments for Rock Road, Central Park entrance, and the two roundabouts out here, and the Central Park Swimming Pool and the landing entrance. We go through these contracts every year, and we have rebid, just to make sure that we're still staying competitive, this goes back, oh, three or four years ago, when the city made some cuts and decided it was cheaper, we could contract out the mowing, and, and that is still cheaper, so that is before you tonight. And I do want to point out, too, Countryside has not raised their rate one cent since we started using them, what, Mr. Lasher, was that four years ago, five years ago? Three, okay, I'm way off, three, three or four years ago, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the lawn maintenance and mowing proposal from Countryside Lawn and Tree for 2015, and authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement.
Second.
First and second, are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then next is from Bel Air's own Treetop Nursery and Landscaping, this is for mowing at City Hall, Central Park, Rock Road entrance, two roundabouts, next is City Hall, Central Park Pool, and the landing entrance as well, so we've got the lawn mowing, lawn maintenance, different things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Make a motion to accept the lawn mowing proposal from Treetop Nursery and Landscaping for 2015, and authorize the mayor to sign the service provider agreement.
Second.
Second, we have a first and a second, are there questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Lasher wrote the reasons why we are using these two companies, and he sent them to council, I would wonder if you would just briefly explain the reason that we're using them, and your, and your opinions about them.
Sure, we, as the mayor said about three years ago, when, when we were laying off some staff, we looked at, basically privatizing some of the mowing to save some costs, and that way we wouldn't have to buy mowers and stuff, so at that point, we sent out requests for proposals from various companies, and Treetop actually came in lower on certain parks and facilities, and then Countryside came in lower on the other ones, so, that was the reason that there's actually two of them. And, so at that time, council approved them, as the mayor said, Countryside has not raised their prices in three years, Treetop has not until this year, and theirs increased by 3%, but we like using Treetop because they are a local company, and, and also, both of these are, are well-known, they're, they're established companies, and they give us good service, they've been around a long time, I know that there are smaller companies, but we get great service from these two companies, you know, they'll help with, if, if they're, if they notice a sprinkler that's broken or something like that, they'll tell us about it, and so, our staff works very well with them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I understood that they only raised 3% surcharge if gasoline went above 350 a gallon, because aren't these the same prices they charged last year?
And that could be, yes, and that's, and maybe.
It says if it, it will be added to the services if gasoline prices exceed.
Right, okay, yes, that, I stand corrected.
So they're still the same price?
Yeah.
Except for the gasoline.
If the gas goes up.
350 more.
So, and so our staff has had a great working relationship with both of them, and, you know, they ask them for advice, and they'll come out and, you know, assist with identifying maybe a, a disease problem or something like that, and that's why staff recommends continuing those.
I believe they've donated several trees to the city.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all Treetops.
Mr. Lasher, I have a question, though, it looks like they, a couple of these is duplicated, is that?
It looks like that way, but one of them's doing the mowing of like the roundabouts, and the other one's doing the, the maintenance, the spraying.
Okay.
And the weed control, that, fertilizing.
Okay.
That's where you see them, two ti, on each one, one's mowing and one's the maintenance.
I was just trying to figure that myself, but it does say as well as lawn treatments for the other, and that.
Right, but they both said the mowing, so that's right through me.
The mowing is only for the three, and I just double-checked the contract for Countryside, it only includes the first three parks.
Okay.
So it's, it's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's hard to read, though.
Yeah, a lot of stuff, I'm glad we have these two companies, and especially, anytime we can use a Bel Air business, like Treetop.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's exciting.
And, yeah, and all the trees that they've donated to the tree board, yeah, just amazing stuff, okay, we have first and second, are there any questions or comments? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is an ordinance for the sale and disposition of certain property under a lease between the city of Bel Air and the city of Bel Air, Kansas Public Building Commission, and the PBC met prior to this meeting and accepted this, we're set to close on 80 acres, this is the 80 acres to Dr. Shaheen there, on the southeast corner, 53rd and Greenwich, for $608,000. This parcel's actually owned by the PBC, but it's leased to the city under all of our complicated stuff, so, the specific documents must be approved by both the PBC and city council to terminate the lease, which, then, once that lease is terminated, the sale can go through, so that's why that's before council tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs.?
I would like to make a motion, an ordinance authoring, authorizing the sale and disposition of certain property under lease between the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and the city of Bel Air, Kansas Public Building Commission, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
And that was a motion to approve, correct?
Yes.
To approve, yes, and I would like to make, the PBC has already approved.
Correct, yeah.
We're just meeting the city council.
And this is all set to close Thursday, so, I like this start to 2015.
Me, too.
It's exciting.
Probably just start the year.
Yeah, any other questions before I do roll call? Okay, Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Ken Lee?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Hanging down the principal, I like it. Okay, final action before council tonight is an ordinance concerning the amendment of chapter five, article two, section 5.2.2 of the city code, I'm going to ask our city attorney Allison to explain these.
Mr. Lasher asked, asked me to review the city code in regard to assessing court costs with parking tickets, and historically, the city has assessed court costs with parking tickets. The city chartered out from underneath state law associated with court costs many years ago, and it, after a review of new statutes that have been passed that are applicable to the city, I realized that there really was a conflict between those parts of state law that are still applicable, and how we were operating under our existing charter. The charter actually authorizes the method of court costs to be assessed pursuant to regular ordinance, which we have carried out within our city code. So the ordinance before you this evening is actually to bring state law and city code into conformance, and authorize parking tickets to be issued without associated court costs, so it would be fine only, and this may become more and more of an issue as more commercial properties are developing, and, and, basically, residents and people from outside the city are, are learning how to operate pursuant to Bel Air's traffic code.
Wonderful, well, thank you, I know this, just the fact that, yeah, having those court costs can be so expensive, and I like the idea of us enforcing our parking laws, but also, at the same time, you know, I can speak from experience, I've been, there's still towns I'm mad at because I got parking tickets, if you know, where they're that high, if you remember those things, so, I would encourage passing of this tonight, so that way, visitors and residents here in our city aren't.
Have to go to court.
Charged, yeah, crazy fees for that, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. McDonald?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance concerning the amendment of chapter five, article two, section 5.2.2 of the city code of Bel Air, Kansas, in connection with assessment of court costs all within the city of Bel Air, Cedric County, Kansas.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? Roll call again, Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Ken Lee?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
And Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Should pass it, okay. Next, discussion and future issues, we are scheduled to have our next workshop on Tuesday, the 10th, the things to discuss of that one will be our second marketing proposal, we'll look at a CIP and talk about the water hookup and also the beautification Bel Air project, so, want to see if everybody's available for that.
I do have a possible conflict with the start of it, I'll, I'll be able to come, but I may end up being a few minutes late, but, my son has conferences that night, so, it's from 4:30 to 7:00 or something like that, but hopefully the teachers let me go fast.
There you go. Did I mark everybody? Marked the calendars for that. And then, the final thing, I would ask for a 20-minute executive session for attorney-client, as well as non-elected personnel, and invite the city manager and city attorney in for the first part of it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
An executive session for 20 minutes, beginning at 7:43. We've got an executive session for 20 minutes, beginning at 7:43. Yeah.
Instead of Rob Lee, so.
Robert E. Lee?
Apparently.
We're just gonna change-
I've seen your house.
No, it was Rod. It wasn't Rob, it was Rod, because I said, no, my name's Hot Rod.
What was that other group called?
The Transort? That was Kent.
Oh, Kent. Two more minutes.
So how come it's facing that way?
Back to order. Council had executive session, no binding action was taken. Anything left before council tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
We have a commercial and industrial real estate contract with Zimmerman Properties Development LLC, and they're wanting to purchase four-plus acres for $96,000, and I make a motion that we approve that this, we approve this contract and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and lots of seconds, okay?
All one second.
Yeah, absolutely.
You get all four of us?
Jamie's got it down, all right. There's been a first and a second on the land contract discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passed, it's okay. One final thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Martin?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.